So, if everyone would just join us in the hunch of the meeting. All right. So this meeting is being recorded, just so everybody's aware. Folks on Zoom. You've been muted. But you have the ability to unmute yourself. So when we go through the agenda, after a second, after a motion has been seconded, you may make comments, but you can, you're gonna have to unmute yourself and give a little quiz up because you cannot see anybody here. When they, they will raise their hand here, but I can't see that for you, okay? All right, so let's get started. Is there a motion to approve the agenda and any amendments?
Sure.
Comments or questions? All in favor? Okay, was there a motion to approve the minutes of eight oh six?
Motion.
Comments or questions? All in favor? Pat, can we please have a report of executive session?
Sure, immediately before the meeting, saving the board met an executive session to discuss pending litigation.
Thank you. Okay, and now we're up to number five, which was public comment on non-agenda items. Is there anyone here or anyone on screen on Zoom that has anything to comment about that is not on the agenda? And, okay, so there'd be no. Mr. Antonucci, is that you? Do you have a comment on anything that is not on the agenda?
No, I'm sorry. I was waiting, I was talking to my wife. Oops.
Oh, okay, so sorry. Okay, all right, so now we're up to announcements and upcoming events. There's a lot of paperwork over on the side table. I'll make this brief, there's just a couple of things that you can pick up there. First of all, we welcome Mi Casa to Casa, they just opened this past Saturday. So you're welcome to a menu, they're over in the Dunkin' Donuts lot. We're pleased to have received the Tractor Supply press release, which puts their opening at the end of the month. So we've got a press release over on the side if you'd like to learn more about Tractor Supply. We do have Revitalized 209 Grant Program was just initiated, so there's a press release for that over the side, so that you can find out about that. We are still accepting applications for the Revitalized 209 Grant Committee, which is the committee that's going to go over grant applicants and who would receive the self-funded township grant. The Revitalized 209 Grant, for anyone who wasn't here last time, is a self-funded grant by the township for properties on 209 to fix up their storefronts and beautify the area. On April 26, the Community and Cultural Center is having an event, Keeping Your Child Safe and Healthy in Sports. So they've got a lot on the line there. You can read the details here, and May 5 will be the opening reception for Flowers Everywhere, which is another art exhibit at the Community and Cultural Center. So that's, that's, well, you had any announcements?
Yeah, I mean, there's next Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. From seven to two. Here in Wooddale. That's the street is, oh yeah, that's the street is this Saturday, for matter of fact. So if you'd like to join. There's a third, there's a guy right here.
We're fine. So we hope you join us in cleaning up some litter. Thank you. Do you have anything else? All right, any correspondence? No correspondence. Okay, and that brings us to the treasurer's report.
Okay, motion from our general count, forty-eight thousand four hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty-five cents.
Comments or questions? All in favor?
Motion from our steward count, seventy-six thousand three hundred and ninety-six dollars and nine cents.
All second, comments or questions? All in favor?
Motion from our gal count, nine thousand dollars and eighty-five cents.
Comments or questions? All in favor? Okay, thank you, Michael. So listen to your report.
There's nothing listed on my report on the agenda, I will probably have some comments and guidance on the one item.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And there's no engineers, so no end of news report. So that brings us now to old business. We propose ordinance amending the Middle Smithfield Township to the ordinances by adding chapter 134, Maintenance of Properties, establishing regulations and maintenance of properties within the township and dividing for legal action in specified situations and prescribing penalties. So just by way of introduction, April 6, this proposed amendment, this proposed ordinance was on the agenda for the April 6 meeting, which is when the public hearing for it was opened. At that time, the action was tabled, and we rescheduled it at that meeting, we rescheduled the public hearing for tonight, April 20. But unfortunately, the ad was not able to be in the newspaper to give seven days notice. So while this is on the agenda tonight, the public hearing will be on, the continuation of the public hearing will be on May 11. So I don't know if I missed anything.
No, so, yeah, so at the last meeting, which was, I guess, April 6, we had advertised the property maintenance code ordinance for adoption, there was a comment from an individual from the public who had a number of comments. The board ultimately tabled action, didn't take action on the ordinance. And we were trying to get it advertised for the hearing this evening, to continue it as well as the long ordinance that we were discussing previously. We didn't get in time in order to meet the requirements of the second-class township code. So it had been now provided with newspaper, it will be advertised for the May 11 meeting.
Yes.
But given the fact that it was discussed at the last meeting, given the fact it's on the agenda, I think it would be appropriate if the board supervisors wanted to accept any public comment with respect to it, with the understanding that the ordinance is not before the board this evening to be adopted, it has been advertised pursuant to, oh, yeah, it's being advertised for the May 11.
So we provided a number of property maintenance ordinances throughout the county over on the side, just so you have some references to other areas that have adopted the same thing. Some are as old as the seventies, some 2003. We've also gotten the counties' model ordinance over on the side. So the way this will work is if anybody would like to speak, just raise your hand, you'll be recognized, you can come. We ask that you please speak at the podium, because the microphones are here, and then the folks over on Zoom can hear you. If you're all the way in the back in your soft spoke, really, nobody will be able to hear you. We also ask that if you are speaking about the proposed property ordinance, we've made enough copies for everyone, I think. If we need to make more, there's folks here who will make more copies for you. But it would be helpful if you're addressing something in the ordinance, if you would tell us what page and section you're on, so we can all follow along with the same thing. Okay, so how does that sound? All right, so is there any public comment? Yes, you're the first to hand I saw. Like, if you wouldn't mind giving your name.
Yes, I'm Sean O'Neil, I've been here for 31 years. I work for the Pet Service Department of Rhino Protection, a regional tiger geologist, and I live off the leisure land, this is quite a few. I just recently had another, you know, group move into the home across the way, which was originally an Airbnb, and I was hoping that, you know, I have the neighbors, but it's not a case. So I'm here for the interest of the ordinance, but in particular, I noticed that there's no, nothing discussing tents. And that's happening quite a bit in my development, that people are putting up tents and putting all the materials in there. And we used, we had deep restrictions against that, but the community associations are generally volunteer, I was a director there for 12 years, years ago. And it's hard to get volunteers, and the people there that volunteer are reluctant to go speak to their neighbors. So it's difficult, you know, for the directors to have them go and go to school, arrest them. So that's why I was hoping that, you know, the, to your inspector would take more of an action, you know, compliance on some of these types of issues. But again, it's the tent problem, that group listed, and then the example ordinances.
Well, let's ask, let's ask Sean, would that be a first reach program?
Yes.
Yeah. It was their large tent that had small, like children, and then stay over for the weekend.
Yeah, so, so the distinction is if it's gonna be in place for more than 30 days. There's, there's two components, there's one is a zoning component, there is a building code component. Structures, fabric structures that are over 1600 square feet in area need a building permit, as well as they would need a zoning permit. Particularly, depending on the length of time that they're gonna be erected. And if your neighbors or those property owners are using those tents or membrane structures as accessory structure for storage buildings, that's a violation if they didn't get it.
Yeah, so we don't want it for a temporary sort of situation, but they're being erected, where I know it's a little directed before was our, our association is not really enforcing deep restrictions.
Well, that, that's an actionable item that the zoning office can deal with now, that, that really, the ordinance that's on, that's being discussed tonight wouldn't change that at all, we could still be able to address that issue. Now, if those tents got a permit and they came, became dilapidated and were flapping in the wind every, you know, time the wind blew, and that would be something we could deal with under the property maintenance code, because they have, they're not maintaining that structure that was permitted. So, but what you're talking about is already regulated.
Because it would be considered an accessory.
That's right, under the zoning ordinance, we don't distinguish about what type of material that building is made out of. It really has to do with the location of the property, the length of the time it's gonna be there at the use of it. And so if some kids wanna put up a top tent in the backyard and sleep out, or like, they don't need to get a permit. Right, but if somebody's gonna set up a tent or a membrane structure in their yard, packed it full of tires and, you know, or put a car in there, that, that's a structure that's serving as an accessory storage building. It's just like people now buy a shipping, dropping them on property. They, they can come get a permit for that, but that's an accessory building, it's not, it's not regulated differently than that, we treated the same there. So I would recommend have your association or to the zoning office, and we can inspect the properties and notify their property owners of what the issues are.
Okay, the, the last thing I have is materials in front of the house. Again, this person brought two fairly large campers or trailers and dumped them right in front of the house, also landscaping business with, you know, the trailer, you know, right on the, on the perimeter of the property of the, of the road, you know, right, not in the roadway, but in the, you know, like you have a center line in the road, it's really right on the side of the, of the road. So it's a hazard for, you know, like a fire engine truck or a garbage truck, things like that. So, you know, I, I have a little bit of mess, that's, you know, I'm here for that particular reason, but I was interested in your ordinance, and I see that you're using some other township ordinance as a guide.
Yes.
So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. So forgive me for not introducing everybody, I'm assuming everybody knows who he is. So, starting to my right, your left, that is Michelle Cool, our township secretary, fellow supervisor Mike Wire, myself, Manette Atkinson, fellow supervisor Mark Oney, and this is our solicitor, our attorney, Pat Armstrong, and next to him is Sean McGlynn. He is our zoning officer from SMM. So he can answer a lot of your questions. Is there any other, yes, sir? You want to speak or need?
No, simple. Okay, so, first of all, I hold no personal animosity toward none of you. Okay? In a second, I want a second of silence, okay? In honor of John Lawrence, who was the owner of a popular animal estate farm on the food lawn. Passed away last week. Okay, so, with that said, right here, was very important and a perfect example of overreach by politician. There's nothing new in this bill. Al Marx was actually the first one to come out with some of the neckes. The other father of socialism, of Russia.
Excuse me, Mr. Padone, can you direct us to the page and section of this ordinance that you are addressing?
To living of our John Lawrence. Rachel just died in a whole major conflict on the earth since the American Civil War. As suicide, less than thousands more agents, all for freedom, liberty, and our way of life. One of our rights in the Constitution is a fundamental right to private property. Private property. And the skies are clouded, and a piece in a creepy soup, and it's still a cloud, just like this bill, this is a cloud bill. There used to be someone here that used to fight this township. Well, you sit in there. That used to fight this township, because they felt that it had too much overreach. And when they spoke about it, to the local media. And ironically, that person is now sitting in the same spot of the people that she used to fight against. And that happens. With that said, President Kennedy, where he said that we will be fighting against infiltrators that want to destroy our country and our way of life. This bill is something like that. First of all, our founders, they did not want this area to be like intimate or stressful. There is no mainstream here. They wanted it that way, they wanted a rule for, for a purpose, for a reason. We have a lot of beers, a lot of animals, and we, we like it like that, we like it that way. This is my mainstream. Kuba Grove, we have a lot of businesses there, but those businesses provide in the winter time specifically, right? Which is a life of death now, if your heating won't go forward. We have a place there on Kuba, that will continue to fix it in the winter. We also have a couple of businesses that provide wood, barwood. That's a life of death situation. Because some people, that's how they heat their homes. Our mainstream is Kuba. We do not agree, we better not know the business there. Maybe they can clean it up, but we do not agree about making them go further, that's gonna cost us more money, we better live here. That's in your bill, we do not agree, we have years, we do not, we do not, with your, with the rule, with the rule, that's my end. We do not agree with the rule about the tallage and the grass, because, you know what, I like the grass, and I have to sit in the years feeding my grass. And that said, I'm gonna leave it up to someone.
No, if you would, please come back and, excuse me. I mean, you've made a lot of statements that are actually untrue. Okay, and, and you've made a lot of quotes about President Kennedy or whoever else he said. But you also have, you started with a mona science for John Lowes, who was a friend of mine, a friend who supervised me. Okay, but I want you to explain, you have on Facebook, snake and animal farm owner in Route 209 East Stradward is dead. Some reports say he was having problems with township official.
I heard that from a very close friend of his.
Okay, tell me what that is, because John Lowes was a friend.
That's like, well, this person was a very good friend of my person.
Well, I, I think that putting this on Facebook for his family, that is reading to the kids that are reading. We got this, please, nobody interrupts. You put this on Facebook for his family to look at, while his kids look at, while they're reading, and say that he had a problem with town, I wanna understand, what is, what was the problem that John had with township officials?
Not what's up with me to say?
You put it on Facebook.
That's something that was said.
Then it's not true, and you know it's not true.
I, I want to.
You want to explain it?
That's, that's, you're making a mistake, so you're making a mistake.
He's in, anything in the bill, in, in the ordinance?
Hold on, you spoke about, excuse me. You spoke about the one place in the section, I asked you to identify the page and section that you were talking about, you didn't, but I found it, it's page six, and it's letter F. Oh no, excuse me, it's not letter F, it's letter E. All premises and exterior properties shall be maintained free from weeds or plant growth in excess of 10 inches. All noxious weeds, as defined by, PA of Ag, shall be prohibited. Weed shall be defined as all grasses, animal plants and vegetation, other vetrines and shrubs. Provided, however, this term shall not include cultivated flowers, gardens, ornamental tall grass, farm fields, meadows, and wooded lots. So I believe that addresses your concern, and should alleviate your fear that your deer will not have enough grass to eat, because you would be using, you would have, if you wanted to turn your front lawn into a meadow, or if you live on a wooded lot, this does not apply to you. So I hope that addresses your concern with this report. Okay? All right, any other public comment? Yes, I saw your hand first, oh, you have somebody, somebody else. Excuse me, sir, do you mind if I address the person on Zoom? Okay, who is there on Zoom that has a comment? This is Barbara.
Hi, yes, it's me.
Oh, okay.
Hi.
Thank you, could you please give your comment?
Um, well, I was just wondering if this, or, you have to excuse me, I'm sick. If this ordinance pass. I'm sorry?
I said you look great.
Thank you. Okay, so if this ordinance passes, um, is it, is it basically stating that an enforcement officer can just like, I don't understand the being able to just come on the property, like, I'm, I'm having a problem with that aspect, so I would just like some more clarification.
So just give me a minute to find the section, the pages.
It's, uh, per your ordinance, it's 13415, it's towards the end. I don't know what you're looking at, but I was reading it on, on, on your website.
Page one, section 134-15, so, Pat, if you'd like to.
Sure, I mean, if you read the section, it's not part lodged again on, on to anyone's property, they have five reasonable notices, it's, it's no additional, it's not an overreach, because it's something that's within the police and power of the municipality, and it's, to be honest, it's probably the same provision that you see in every other property maintenance code zoning ordinance throughout Monroe County. And, you know, there's not gonna be a code enforcement officer just intruding upon your property, they'll reach out, they will provide you with reasonable notice that there's a need for some type of inspection on your property. And that's if they can't see it from the ground. But you will always get noticed, like you would in any other situation, when a code enforcement officer needs to enter upon your property.
And if you, if I may, if you look at the last sentence, it specifically says, prior arrangements must be made with the owner.
Can you re, can you repeat that, I didn't hear you?
The, the last sentence in that paragraph, it says, prior arrangements must be made with the owner or his agent.
Okay. So, I just, okay, so is this like, if it's like, the property's run down and blah, 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 blah? Or somebody complains, or puts a complaint in with the township, that it's causing havoc, or I don't know, whatever, that would give a reason for them to, for a enforcement officer to reach out to the person that owns that house? Is that, is that basically, is that what that's for?
Yep, it's specifically related to a violation of the ordinance. It doesn't say that. It doesn't say that. It's a part of the ordinance and section 134, it's high. Guys, this is a public meeting. One person at a time. Section 13415 references the inspection, and it's all related to property, this is a separate chapter, this will be a separate chapter in the code ordinances. There's a separate chapter for the zoning, there's a separate chapter for the salvage, there's a separate chapter for whatever else the township has on their books, this is, this will be a separate chapter for the property maintenance ordinance of Middle Smithfield Township. Very similar to many other townships and municipalities in Monroe County.
I don't know, Sean, you want to explain the process you take?
Yeah, generally, these separate ordinances are complaint-driven, so we will get complaints from neighboring property owners if they say, you know, the property next door is overgrown, the gutters are falling off, and it's degrading my quality of life, it's impacting my use and enjoyment of my property. We go out and do an inspection. And we see from the road that what the complaint is, is valid, it's a valid complaint, will they send a notice to the property? If we can't see it from the road, and we need to arrange an inspection, we will send a letter, we'll say, hey, you've been notified that there may be a violation of your property, we'd like to come out. It's up to the property.
I'm gonna clarify. Okay, thank you so much, I appreciate the clarification, sir.
Okay, so the second, so the next hand I saw was this gentleman here, and then there was somebody over.
I would like to comment if I may.
Oh, thank you. And Mark Antonucci?
Thank you.
Oh, yes.
Yes, it is me, at last I looked, it was me. Okay, may I make a comment or two?
Certainly.
Okay, I'm gonna go back to that, what the lady was just talking about, 134-15. On the face of it, it seems to me to be unconstitutional about the Fourth Amendment. I don't even, you know, where, where's the probable cause, okay, let's start with that. You can't just go into somebody's house and, okay, 24 hours notice, that's very nice, but who cares? You have to have probable cause. Otherwise, it's an illegal search. According to the Constitution of the United States, Fourth Amendment. Okay? Somebody said the nine worst words in the English language, where I'm from the government and I'm here to help. Okay, what is your intent with this regulation?
Okay, so those are two questions, and the first question.
I, I want to remind that we know this is public comment.
You may.
This is not question answered, the township board is being very lenient, and they're responding to the extent that they can, but this is public comment, it's for the public.
Gobble, gobble, gobble.
It's an opportunity for the public to comment, it is not a question answer. But I will say, nothing in here is unconstitutional, and obviously, each individual case of enforcement or inspection will be. of enforcement or inspection will be, you know, just that, case by case, please. Well, then I can add to that, there is never a point under this ordinance that the code enforcement officer did order themselves to get into your property. If you, if you have an issue that could be an internal property maintenance code violation, the only way we're getting into the property is either with an invite from the tenant or the property owner, or we have to go into the court and get it, and get an administrative cert warrant. It's a pretty high bar, we have to be able to demonstrate there's some real palpable risk there that someone's in danger and we will then take that action, we very rarely do that, there's only a cases quite often when we think there's a a very unsafe condition that we need to address.
So that would.
Very rare, rarely is very arbitrary. Ever have a mouse in your house? You have a woodpile for firewood? Mice, rodents live in those wood piles. This whole thing is so arbitrary, it's, it's, on the face of it, it's ridiculous.
Um, just a reminder that the federal laws and the state laws uh, exist and the township cannot vote something that is uh, trumps the federal and state law, we have to follow that, but um, the second part of your question was what was the intent and I think, you know, Mark, you can answer as part of zoning if you'd like to answer, Mike, you're certainly welcome to answer, I mean, the intent was just to clean up the properties that are here, whether they're on two oh nine or some of the junkyards and previously, what we, uh, our current zoning ordinance um, allows us to go so far, but unfortunately, people don't clean things up when they receive a sternly worded letter. So that's the.
Are there not things about light?
I couldn't.
He's asking about the light. The light.
Somebody's got really bad property, are there already regulations to enforce that?
I I can't. Oh, light, I'm sorry.
Only if the township.
The zoning officers giving you an answer to your question.
If if the township wanted to enter into an open or create an ordinance to regulate light, they could do that, there's county funds that can assist with that, state funds. Um, Middle Smithfield Township, since I've been here, has aggressively pursued uh, taking down dilapidated structures that are dangerous structures that are degrading to different communities within Middle Smithfield Township and they've used their dangerous and unsafe building ordinance, their existing nuisance orders to do that, and it's been very effective and they've been able to raise property values in those neighborhoods, so even though they don't have a blight ordinance, they have been very good at handling these issues. But this may, the property maintenance code is simply another tool in the toolbox to fill in the gaps of the things that we can't deal with comfortably under the ordinance as it exists. Can we deal with most of the problems as we were discussing earlier with tents or fabric structures? Yeah, we have avenues, but to have an ordinance like this actually closes some of those loopholes and allows us to be more effective and target things the way they should be and making sure that the ordinance articulates those matters is really important and that's why it's good that we can have a conversation where everybody gets to look at it and and make a determination whether it's a valuable ordinance.
Okay, nice.
Hey, uh, thank you for encouraging me. Um, I got you, I understand what you're saying. Uh, I just want to go on record that I am vehemently opposed, I don't like this uh, regulation as it is written. But again, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. And yeah.
My name is uh, Steven Billen, and we will hop up to water. Uh, this ordinance, the way I see it, it's meant, as you said, to maintenance properties. Well, I understand, you know, I like how you three have been running the township for a while now. And I see it here more towards the commercial and abandoned properties, the blight properties, so, but this is just a blanket for all property. Why don't you put it, break it down so it has a commercial section on the abandoned property slash blight section and a residential section? And then there's other, look, because some of these things are, my understanding is ridiculous, like you have uh, one thirty-four dot nine, eight seven, B. It has to do with roof gutters, drains or other systems dividing and constructed in transport stormwater to be discharged into any sanitary sewage system or any part thereof. So does that mean that our gutters have to go into septic and stuff like?
No, you read the first part, the intent of that is so the roof gutters do not go into the sanitary sewage.
No persons shall permit, in other words, you're not allowed to run into your sanitary sewage.
Where is, the very beginning of one thirty-four nine, no person shall. Okay, I I missed one.
Yeah, that's the duance of an ordinance, you gotta watch it.
I understand, most of the world, you have to have everything in black and white and everything. But then there's like other one, like people saying with the woodpile, you have like, what was it, uh, one thirty-four eight A. And that's at the top of the page. And that one has to do with rodents, while I have chipmunks that live in a rock wall. Now, am I gonna have to tear down my rock wall or kill my chipmunks? Or the abandoned, the tree that's been in my backyard for over thirty years that holds wildlife in? Am I gonna have to get rid of it?
We've received.
Because according to that, it says that I have to do something with the rodents or I have to fill in the wall or tear down one.
I don't know if anybody's going to blame that, you know?
No, I'm saying that that, I'm not saying you guys, I'm saying, say fifteen years down the road, we get the township supervisors that are all about what's in black and white and enforce what's in black and white, I'm sorry, that's in black and white.
We would not have the manpower to enforce it.
Well, if you, if you think about it, every single township employee is a reporter. So as they're driving around and they see a blight, abandoned property or something that falls under a ordinance violation, they can report it to them. And then he goes out and investigates it.
We do not have the manpower.
Whoever the next supervisor or zoning officer down the line, and so they have a problem, they can go in.
I I understand what you're saying. I understand what you're saying, but we do not have the manpower to report chipmunks in stone walls. I know, we receive complaints.
You report that I have chipmunks living in the stone wall and he's got to come up.
And you ask the zoning department, they prioritize their complaints. And then the the falling down buildings are gonna go to the top of the pile and the chipmunks in the stone wall.
I understand, but that's the three of you, fifteen, twenty years, twenty-five years down the line, nobody changes the ordinance. You get a whole new batch of supervisors and they want to be.
We've received complaints about people who pour and have garbage. And the garbage attracts feral cats and the rats.
I know what you're saying in here, but it does, it says that I have to take down my stone wall.
Does it say that?
Which we have to address.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
You know, listen, I totally get where you're coming from. I I have a libertarian kind of, I'm an Irishman, we we don't like people telling us what to do. But at the end of the day, an ordinance like this is, the intention is to make sure that people that have a piece of property in the middle of the neighborhood aren't degrading the the people around it. And there has to be a rational component, there is a training component to making sure that the people that are doing this work are certified to do the work. But there's another bigger, broader picture here, and that is the reason you guys are here tonight and the reason these guys are listening to you is because we have a wonderful democratic system and it works really well on the local level. If you guys are getting harassed by the zoning officer or by any code enforcement officer, you have the ability to come to the next meeting and tell these people about it. I deal with complaints all the time about me or my people because we're too heavy handed. I mean, it's a difficult business to be in because you're always pissing somebody off, right? It's not like my motto is, I'm not pissing somebody off, I'm not doing my job, but at some point, you're always on one side or the other. But at the end of the day, you gotta do the job fairly.
That's the role of the.
I understand, I I understand, everything has to be black and white, what I'm saying is you gotta break it up, like, like I said, commercial, residential and abandoned flashlight properties. And then you have your little, I've written bylaws for communities and stuff, you know what I used to do for a living? And I used to enforce this stuff and some of the stuff, and I used to go to those communities and say, you can't have this in here, you need to spell it out to the T because somebody's gonna take it to that old next level that doesn't need to go there.
I see.
So I'm gonna bring it down.
There is always a discretionary.
Make it more legible, just like it's, you used to like, or it says the rock wall, the pile of wood has to be moved.
Nothing in here says a pile of wood has to be moved or removed. There's nothing in here that says that.
If you have wildlife living in it, rodents are wildlife. What does it say? You have to remove the wildlife or you have to fix, and you have to fix the problem.
Structures blocks.
Yeah, but as, as the zoning officer.
Blocks in yards.
As one, one at a time. As the zoning officer indicated, there is discretionary components imposing any, right? The example you gave, I don't think raises any here.
But that's the exam you left.
That's what we're getting. Then if the intent is to prevent a nuisance associated with rodents, what, what, I understand. It's not to address chipmunks.
And I'm, I'm not saying he's gonna enforce it, I'm not saying that they're talking about enforcing, but it is in here and twenty years down the line, somebody could decide, I want to enforce it so that whole wall is coming down.
Need to be rewarded.
It just needs to be worked, and other things need to be broken down and worded differently, you know, so it doesn't take it to that next step, I'm looking, I'm not looking towards you guys, I'm looking in the future where we get somebody that's not too keen on the township and wants to be the bad guy.
Well, I, so here you go, I'm not gonna take a stab at rewording it, but I had the same thing, I live on Kohlberg for the my whole life, you know that? At one point, I am very fed up with them right next door and he had about thirty chickens. And I think he had twenty racks to go with those thirty chickens, and I was constantly fighting off rats.
Yeah.
Is that fair to me?
No.
So that that's what this is about, it's not about your chipmunks, in fact, I would rather get rid of the bear that's gone from my garbage every week.
I know, he goes, he almost walked.
Highway too, you know, but I don't want to get rid of the bear, the bear is a fun place I live in, I like.
But I'm just saying it's in there, so you may not walk, but somebody else down the line.
But I gotta take it to that, it's somewhere. It's gotta, it's gotta be somewhere because the rats and the chickens don't mix. And a lot of people want to have chickens, I'm sure there are people in this room that have chickens, that want to have more. With the price of eggs, but with chickens, come rotted.
I don't know, you just gotta look at.
Well, you're, you're right.
You don't have that.
Okay?
Alright, than, thank you, Stephen, I appreciate it, if you have any suggestions on rewordings that you've done it? I'll, I'll take the stuff, I appreciate it, thank you.
My name is Professor Deener and I agree with you, it's over the broad, not specific enough. This is setting up a homeownership uh, association, this is a township.
Exactly.
I don't, I don't need a homeownership.
One example is one thirty-four dash, see that's finished four, F. All exterior walls have been cleaned from hole, franks and leathery material and maintained, workable and properly serviced, code was required to prevent deterioration. So your town has made it, my drive, where needs to be made?
That's.
That's a homeowner's assault, you know? Not gonna be my neighbor. And then it's page five, number M, letter M. Every window styling door and frame shall be kept in sound condition and good repair and weather-toped. And, why do you tell me that I have to have a complaint about weather-toped?
Are you gonna have a complaint about it?
If you, if somebody complains, you have the right to enforce it, you come into my house and say, your door is not weather-towed, you better replace it.
Well, I think if you were the tenant, that may be the case.
I don't have the tenant, that's only we run your protection.
It's too broad.
It's too.
Again.
Too broad.
Everyone, this is the last, one person at a time, one person at a time.
I infer them.
I don't have neighbors, but this gives you the right, if somebody happens to get a grievance against me and wants to complain, he can come in and say, oh, your windows not weather-towed. I have to replace my windows? This needs to be reworked, it needs to be reworded, it's too broad. It's vague. It gives too much power.
Yeah.
So it's too broad, and it wants to be more specific, I mean, everything, I mean, wants to make this aggressive, abandoned buildings, okay, or, you know, disorderly lots or something, they've stated, but this applies to routine maintenance on a house.
Yeah.
If I got rust on my, my, rising on my, on my chimney, that's in there.
Yeah, I think that's more dependent, I see.
At the time, give yourself these powers. And completely give yourself these powers, this should be mailed to every resident and put on a ballot to be voted.
But more specific for me would be adopting the international bill of bills.
May I make one more comment?
I just throw it out there, we want more specific, I feel we still have that already. So I said, well, you said, we're gonna go by that? This is, this is a small, small.
Oh, I would like to comment further.
Uh, you're not being recognized now, Mr. Antonucci, because someone else is speaking and let everyone else have one bite of the apple before you take two.
I'm sorry, okay.
Oh, thank you, so, he was talking about the international problem.
Said Sean about the international.
Is that a threat?
No, it's not a threat, but you want it to be more specific, so I don't want to get more specific other than diving in for it.
Okay, okay, again. Again, this is a public meeting, you're providing a public comment. Is there any, anyone else in the public that wants to comment on the ordinance that again, is not up for adoption this evening?
Well, thank you for your comment, Mr. Herbert, I didn't catch your last name, so.
Uh, it's Hevener.
Hevener, thank you, so I saw your hand first, then I think the, there was a lady in the back and this gentleman with the cat next to Mr. Kevler and then uh, this gentleman in the green deferment. So sir, uh, over by, yes, by the exit, I saw your, your hand first.
Okay.
Yes.
Uh, my name is James Barrett, I'm a resident here for over six years. And I only have one question regarding this, is you can go, according to this, you can go into a private community, we belong to communities, we pay dues. The county doesn't come and file roads, the county doesn't do zero requests. Our grid enter, if there's a fire, they'll show up and so will the tenants, and the council show up, other than that, they don't do anything. So, uh, do you agree that you should have a, the homeowners association? Give you permission for them to make a complaint before you whole breach step into our property, which is private property? And so I'm making your answer.
Again, again, this is not question answered, but I suspect it would be very similar to the enforcement of the zoning ordinance within the township. However, if it's, if the township zoning officer responds to complaints for their private communities, that's likely the response they're gonna get. Uh, this is not, this is nothing new, uh, they're not trying to include any. Uh, this is not, no, this is nothing new, uh, they're not trying to include any additional power than they already have an increasing power to decide class action code.
Why need is it? I just show Steve Alex, uh, they need you to come into private property. And do anything, especially when there's a homeowners association, without getting permission from homeowners association, someone in that particular. Group, you know, that private place. Has a problem and one of their neighbors, they come to homeowners association, if we cannot deal with this person, then we could come and ask you out. Or for you to just listen to them, and just drive into our community, which you don't have any permission to do upfront. That's not the right thing.
The private community is part of township, it's, it's regulated with, under the township's ordinance, like any other single family, any other parcel of land. The HOA can impose additional. Uh, controls over what you do within the community. But that does not negate the powers that the township has. And its responsibilities under the zoning ordinance, building code, all the other code of ordinance we have. And again, there are quite a few ordinances that are already in place, that are already enacted and enforced in your community. It doesn't matter that you have a private, uh, community. We, we have every right to go and enforce the, the township's laws, and that's what we did. This is, this is not any different than any of us.
Yeah, here's an example of that, there was a call. Couple months back from, of homeowner and HOA that really gave me an earful about, do you know there's an entire automotive repair business going on? On a lot in our community? No, I don't, because we don't go in your community, and that's where I speak. So it's not really, it wasn't our fault that there was a whole business going on, the HOA is become. The HOA didn't wanna address that property. Is what it boils down to.
And I can add to that, the zoning office always tries to incorporate the HOA, so if we have the contact information. For the association, when we do an enforcement accident, we usually copy them on, so they're informed. So they know what's going on in their community, but again, we're not restricted by the rules and regulations of the HOA.
Well, it sounds like if your neighbor doesn't like the other, they could use you on part. And that's always a problem, as a little neighbor. For whatever reasons. There's nothing we can do, right?
It's true then, uh. Folks often use us instead of speaking to their neighbors, we always encourage people to talk to their neighbors when there's an issue. But it's true, a lot of times, if they.
I know some way to talk in a forward. And, but the problem is this. And it's forty members in there. And only one person has a problem with one person. And she's creating a problem, or they. I, I didn't mean to say it was only that, but any, in any case, they're, they create a problem. For everybody. Because they don't like that person. And all, and other complaints that they made, I mean, you go in and check it, you find out that, she's. She's not telling the truth, she's telling what she perceives as the truth, but when you get down to it, it's better. So, but okay.
Well, we're hearing everything, so that is getting heard, but thank you. Uh, and who was the next person? The, yeah, there was a fellow in the back, and then this fellow with the cat. So the gentleman in the back, would you like to come up and speak, and then the gentleman in the capping green, uh, green shirt, and then this gentleman.
And, um. From my earliest experience from previous places, previous townships. I'd like to, your turn correctly pointed out that. You're not posing a question as, but by the comments. Session, I'd like to comment that. The panels need to be very narrow, because, I'll give you an example, in New York City. When they felt there was a shortage, they suddenly went up to the people who had little frames around their license plates. Apparently they had the. The longer hooks. That for paper, so people who were ticketed two, three hundred dollars. And basically having this kind of plastic frame that the dealership put on for them, and they're gonna have to choose, so. Do anything about that. So. When we talk about. Removing infestation and things like that, maybe you can specify that. The rodents need to be potentially dangerous, let's say, potentially spreading quickly. For, you know, say, for anything, um, like that. I move five hundred to a thousand dollars. I understand that there are times when this, I understand that in certain circumstances from somebody's. You want somebody, I don't know, let's say, became professional drunkard, and, um. They simply let his house become accessible. And I understand that you need to go off to that critical build out, and balance of lies, only to, and basically see the property, I understand that. Is the case, but. Maybe it would be wise for you to put in some kind of them. There may be fine, but first we're going to main laws, as during the word of letter. Because in many, many cases. If. An issue is whether tightness of my window. I'll fix it a hundred. So, as a resident, I'd appreciate if you were to say. Look, this is what our inspector has seen without going into the house, we've seen it from the road. And this is what we're on bring all, and just for your knowledge. If we don't come out here within, within two weeks and we don't have it fixed. You're gonna have this all for back when I have. Five hundred bucks at least, five hundred. My call to you, ladies and gentlemen, is that I had spoken to you before, and you were truly. Well, not spoken to her, but, uh, I think other people that had seen on the new person, uh, I'm. You seem to be truly. With this township, you seem to have a heart and soul in this residency, and. I feel truly blessed that. When I was there. You were there to meet me on the new people, meet me. I know that very, very few townships, so not certain the state and the nation do that, I'm thankful for you doing this. But be very cautious if somebody comes up to you. And is interested in nothing. But covering up their budget shortages that they themselves then, uh, have caused, but pumping pumping money. Into their habits. Friend accounts, under the guise of some kind of, uh. Outreach issue, so. My suggestion to you, or my. Thank you to you. Is. Narrow, at the, narrow it as much as possible, not minding yourself, not keeping yourselves in mind. But even with enemy in mind. Imagine that. You retire. And somebody who personally hates, somebody that you personally fought against, uh, politically. Have come into the office, and is going to take. Your son, your grandson to court, using your own laws. You don't want that, I understand that it's easier for us to. To make a different law that's going to be more narrow and, uh, more active. But these, you will sleep better in your retirement when you know that it's not your rules, that your grandson is being punished for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Lawrence, uh, you have one thing in the cap, I believe you were done.
Uh, my name is Jacob Custer, you can hear me, I've been a resident here for a long time. My concern is, I'll echo many other concerns here, is that this, uh, law is, or ordinance is overly, overly broad. And. You should really try to find a tower that's. Meet the hazards or whatever else you're trying to prevent, um, this can be used against ordinary citizens. For something like having people in your house, now you might not do it, sir, but. The next owner officer might be a sell it, and say, all right, that's the tip, you know, that's the lapidation. You hear the thousand dollar fine, if you don't remedy this in thirty days, and it's just. Scary, scary to live under this kind of ordinance, where at any time. You know, zoning officer, or any other official, from the township can come in and say, that's no good, you know, and. The other, you know, that means it's, it's difficult for an ordinary citizen to understand these things. Under second. Page eight or page six. Yeah, says no person shall commit the accumulation of heavy undergrowth. What is heavy undergrowth, who's to determine that? If the zoning officer comes out and says, oh, well, this is heavy over undergrowth. Well, who am I to? You know, uh, page six.
Yeah, yeah, so, so what you're doing, like, everything that comes before it. Has to constitute a safety hazard to pedestrian or vehicular traffic. So I, I guess what you're asking is, who cut, who determines what is a safety hazard?
Yeah. But, well, there's the example of heavy gear growth. And you have a section here that, you know, nations have cut back from your driveways and roadways. So that you shouldn't have any growth that's in your parents' road, or pedestrian traffic, I imagine, but.
Well, that, that, how I'm reading it is, whatever you have. Whether it's heavy, light on, whatever it is, you can't constitute a safety hazard. To pedestrian or vehicular traffic. As far as. What the zoning officer would consider that, I. Sean, if you have anything.
And I, that's, I mean, this one thing is not my specific concern. It's a more of a general concern, that there are things in here that are very open to interpretation, with heavy fines added on, if you don't comply. There's a thousand dollars. For about up to a thousand dollars violation, and that holds daily, daily. If I have a roof flashing, or a shitting that needs to be repaired, that can be six months before I can get the proper maintenance. Is that, or is that fine, gonna hold daily while I'm trying to find the proper makes? And then if I don't pay my fine, you let me lean against my house. I could potentially lose my house, but they couldn't get a maintenance and fine, that's the way I leave this. I'm sure the. Well, I did, that was just an example, but by assuming that's gonna fall down, and it's gonna why, you know, something that would be affected by the ordinance. Takes you a while to run into that situation.
It's like, it's like, and then, I understand what you're saying. But, but I think also you have to appreciate, if you go on and read that whole paragraph. Okay? It's one thirty-four thirteen. That. Those penalties and fines have to be led by a district judge, it's not the supervisor sitting here. So you have to respect. That a district judge is worried about. Ink of your flashing, or whatever it can be given, I mean, that's so, you know, there, there are safeguards in this, that it's not just gonna be some road board.
Well.
That decides.
Well, that, that's an excellent.
John, do you wanna explain how, how, the process of getting to the district judge?
Yeah, we, and just to be clear, the zoning office doesn't just go ahead and file civil complaints. We, we actually are always making sure that the elected officials. Know what we're doing, because it could cost the township taxpayers if we start filing civil complaints. Solicitor asks to go in, in our cases, just hang on one second, there's a really fundamental principle, a, a, an important fundamental principle to understand. And I think the solicitor can probably flex it out a little better than I can, but this is a nuisance ordinance. And then, and for us to go into court, we have to prove. To the court without any shadow of doubt that there is a public nuisance. And the township doesn't wanna spend that money easily, and I don't ever take these things lightly, because it's a very high bar, the burden. Is not on you to defend yourself, the burden is on us to prove a case. So this is a high bar, it's a difficult thing to do, and as Mike pointed out, we can't impose anything, that until the court. Uh, decides. Yeah, no, that's absolutely right, if you look at one thirty-four eleven, and I think it's very important, they don't want to grasp this. If the township determines there's a violation, it raises to the level of the need to enforce, you get a warning. Right, you get a letter from the township saying, hey, we believe you're in violation of this section, this ordinance, because X. The township gives, the code enforcement officer's gonna give you an opportunity to respond and say, what do you mean, or to fix it.
And there's no time limit.
There's no time, there's nothing requiring the township on the thirty-first day. To file a district magistrate action, and.
No.
And there will have to be a notice of violation. And subject to that, if it's still not resolved, then the township has to make a decision like anything else, whether or not they wanna take this before the district magistrate.
But when is the day start calling, that now this violation, what is the day?
The day that the district magistrate finds you in violation. And we, we, so we send up, once we get to the formal enforcement stage. Which in, in, in ordinance like this will not happen very often, but when it does, that's when the clock starts, and that's when the, that you have thirty days. To remedy the violation, or we will then file that civil complaint. But this is a, a, a very protracted process, and it's not something that the zoning office, no zoning office wants to do that lightly. There's costs that are incurred to the township, that's why we always get approval from the elected officials before we file, because we gotta, we have to have fees that we pay to the court. It's time consuming, and then the solicitor's gonna have to come in and help argue the case, because it's a nuisance case, and it's hard to prove. The intent is to prevent public nuisance, I can attest any number of this board, intent is not for fines, the intent is to make sure that the property owners maintain their property.
And I, I think the intent is good, I think the way of achieving that intent is formally. Uh, explained, fully written in the ordinance, so I think you can really reconsider, uh. Way that more finely, try to find tune it. But it, just a, a couple of examples of things that we've talked about tonight, the cracked window. Now, just think what Sean and, and Patrick said, are we going to court over cracked windows? No, we're gonna go to a, a court over a house with a missing window that has children going in and out of every day to school, that's what we're gonna go to court on. It's got, you know, it's a, it's a life safety thing, or, you know, am I gonna go to court because your, your chimney needs some flashing on it? No, I'm not, but if you have a swimming pool next to it that's ready to fall over, you might have a discussion about that. And get that, and I'm just saying, but, so, and you guys here today might not do that, and as I've, people I've heard here before, if. Who knows the next elected officials or the next owner officer, how, how much of a development might be under these things?
But you, you still have to be willing to accept what these guys cost per hour, I'm very cognizant of. And it's gotta, it's gotta, it's hard, and not for nothing, but at least, it's gotta be worth. Worth the advantage for the box, I mean, it's gotta be a life safety issue for sure. And if we're not gonna go there with a cracked window, and paying a attorney, and the zoning officer to sit there with our magistrate or whoever. And more than likely, he's gonna, I mean, my experience in the past, he's a great guy, all the magistrates in there are, though, are great guys. They get the homeowners benefits of that, we're the big bad town, so.
Alright, thank you, Jacob, I appreciate it. Now, we, after, uh, Jacob was this gentleman in his green shirt.
My name is John Clark, uh, I've got a house here in, uh, Bill Smithville, for very two years. It's in Lake of Pines, homeowners association, down the road here, um. And I'm certainly as treasurer of the board in Lake of Pines, um. As someone else has indicated, homeowners associations have their own. Their own list of rules and regulations and bylaws, things that people in those. Communities have to respect and, and, uh. And, uh, respond to, um. And which we have people who have never lived in a home owner's association, who arrive. Either as renters or owners, who have looked through that there is this layer of responsibility that's. That they have to read about and follow up on, um. I think from the, the previous, uh. Set of discussions. You really need to clarify the process that begins with inspection. And may or may not end with a court order. And, and how that goes, because it's, it's not. It's written by somebody who understands it, but not written. It's written by somebody who understands it, but not written to be read by somebody who doesn't understand it. As and then the one of the things I was gonna ask about, you know, you get a notice of a violation, which is which is second son. One thirty four eleven and then you have to comply or whatever. In our association bylaws. And rules and regulations, we have, uh. The the actually. A number of the officials in the community have the. Have the authority to, uh, to make notice of violations. And and then the community manager will will. Send the violation notice to, uh, to the, uh, homeowner describing the violation. And, uh, if there's a fine involved, that will be mentioned as well. The homeowner at that point has an opportunity to request an appearance before our resolution committee. Which is made up of, uh, I believe it's one or two board members and three homeowners who are not board members. And they need court. And they can say, I shouldn't have gotten this violation for these reasons. Uh, or I already fixed it or what, let's say, and then the resolution committee will consider all of that. And make a, uh, a motion to the to the board of directors. That either pulls off the original fine. Uh, says it should be thrown out or sometimes something in between, like not that big a fine, it should be lower. Um, it's not clear that there's any procedure like that. That applies now because you have rules already and are out there enforcing them. You must have some kind of process that exists. I'm assuming this is not gonna be a different process. It's just a different list of things to look for.
That's right.
When you're getting ready to start the notice violation.
What?
Uh, so it's it's. Uh, it's it's not clear. How a a homeowner can respond as to whom about a violation that they think is either. Overreaching, incorrect, or unreasonable. Because there's a lot of judgment involved here and you know that too, our own enforcement of the rules, you know, how. How far does the tree have to move before it's in danger of falling? Uh, even if you're parked up down the tree, you have to get a permit for it. Uh, well, in our, our. New committee about books and. Decides whether, because we want the slade of pines, we want the trees to be there. It's not like the bushes. Uh, so, uh, we. We make a judgment call and if the homeowner doesn't agree, they can go to the resolution committee and say, here's a picture of the tree. It's been there forever, big tree, and I don't think it's going anywhere. And even if it's down to go or there, it's not a problem. And then the committee would have an opportunity to make a recommendation to the board with respect to the violation, whether it should continue or not. That's about the the process, uh, and. I'm probably more, um, optimistic about the common sense. Of some of the people who would be out doing this, uh, than others are, uh. Because there there's a lot of that that applies here. You know, how tall is tall, how thirty is thirty, how rusty is rusty? And no, you're gonna have to tear it over down the wall, which gotta kill all the mice, good luck. And I happen to have two woodchucks in our lard yard that I'd be happy for you to come over to stay there. And our dog would be happy and she'll she'll get a bear.
Two woodchucks or bear.
Uh, well, we have the fence, we don't have a bear in the backyard, but I had a photograph of a bear in our driveway. And in our backyard before the fence. Love to share that. The the other thing that says at the bottom page one in the preface, recognizing the need to establish certain, well. You obviously only establish some certain health and safety requirements for buildings. So it it makes a question. What recognized the needs to do this? And it's sounding like it's more, well, everybody else is doing it and it gives them an extra. An extra arrow in the hooker to go after some of this stuff. Uh, or it may be that you get complaints that aren't covered by the current regulations. And so you want some additional things so you can address those complaints. Uh, more clearly and consistent with what you've got on the books. I am, however. Uh, and this is always a problem with any kind of law or regulation enforcement. The only thing worse than a bad law is a good law is not enforced. Or enforced infrequently and indiscriminately or haphazardly. And it doesn't sound as though you're gonna go out and hire half a dozen in, uh, what they call in here. Enforcement officers, but rather you're gonna, they have an enforcement officer other than yourself or. Uh, who would look into things like this. But it also looks like anybody who works for the township would be deputized by the township to undo this. I'm guessing there are tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of households. Many households in the township. And. For me, that means that most of the identification. Of violations of this and of existing ones are going to come from other homeowners, neighbors. Who may have access to grind as well as sharp eyes to see things. And that's where, you know, they essentially act as the first step in the enforcement process. The identification of something that needs to be addressed and it comes through the township. And then if they think that the first thing seems sane when they're presenting the the problem. Uh, which I'm sure is not always the case because we get that too. The, uh, then you follow up and and. See what's going on. In a sense, it makes. It deputizes to an extent all owners in. In the township, uh, as. And we're gonna be encouraged, our own homeowners, if they see something going wrong, let the manager know about it and we'll get to it.
Do you something to?
Yeah, and, uh. While some homeowners will just jump on that like, oh, boy, I've been waiting to get these people. And others will say, I don't wanna get involved, you know, I don't wanna have to stand up and say, you did this, you did that. The. I think it's gonna work better than a lot of the people here think it will. But it's never gonna be perfect and because of that, I. I think the the process from violation to compliance for penalties enforcement has to be clearer. And not from the perspective of the township, from the perspective of the people who are going to be inspected. Uh, uh, so they understand what their role at each point in the process is and where they have opportunity. To say, no, that's not right. Who would they say it to and when would they say it? And and then where would the judgment as to whether they were right or not appear? Whether they, whether it goes forward or gets thrown out or there's some kind of compromise. And, uh, I I. I I I'm concerned, uh. That this gives. A lot more opportunity. To meddle, but for good reason mostly, uh, in homeowners. Property's behavior, choices of what they plan or don't. And well, how successful they are in getting rid of rodents, other animals on their property that they're trying. Trust me, as we all probably know, you don't just say, go, and they run. Yes, and a lot of people are not not happy about. Terminating the lives of small furry creatures or even large furry creatures, including deer and hare. So it it's a tough situation, needs to be clear for the the homeowners how the process works. And please. The. I think you may already be, uh, discriminating in how you do enforce this. Is there other circumstances that? For a bunch of young, strong people who ought to be out there, long lard, or is it a little old lady who can barely stand? Uh, I realize the laws apply, we have everybody. But, um, you know, we're not talking armed robbery here, we're talking tall grass and, uh. I'm just hoping that the the process will understand that when you get out there doing your thing. Thank you.
Thank you, John. So I don't know. John, if you wanted to take a brief moment to explain the process.
You should be explaining in the, a little bit of the beginning here, those those last few, uh. One thirty four, eleven, twelve, thirteen.
What your concern is, and I I it's it's an excellent point because many ordinances do include an appeal provision. Right? So for instance, if I started enforcement action under the zoning ordinance. I have to, under the municipal planning, go back to including that the right to appeal to the zoning area. Many of our.
Do you have a zoning here? Or does it mention that here?
No, I put that.
This is not a zoning issue. This is a standard.
I want to hear from the people I voted for. Not people I didn't.
Between zoning and this in terms of inspections and and.
Yes, just.
Maybe it's a property.
Well, just so you understand that this is a health, safety, welfare ordinance. It's not a zoning regulation. So and and then one of the questions that came up earlier is, why can't we just target the commercial zones? And we did actually talk about that for a while, but the problem is that makes it moves it into zoning. And this type of ordinance has to encompass, and then again, I'll let the solicitor talk more about that. But it really has to encompass the township because it's a health, safety, welfare provision. It has to include the township. But the appeal provision, which is an an interesting idea, and I I thought about that too. Could we have a hearing officer or some kind of interim step? But at the end of the day, when you when you understand what it means to have a nuisance violation and the burden that's on the township to prove it. And the fact that we're obligated to send a heads up letter, there's a a period there of dialogue. Then we would have to send a formal enforcement notice before we go to court. We're letting the board know, hey, we've got this issue which has been percolating now for three months. We can't get any movement on it. There's a lot of layers to get to where we're actually gonna file that civil complaint. It's not an easy process to get there. But but I agree with you, there is the potential that the board could consider an appeal, but that appeal would then generally go to either. A separate appeals property maintenance code board of appeals, which is what the international property maintenance code or orders you to set up. Or they could go to the board of supervisors. But the board specifically designed this ordinance and the county recommended it not having that appeals process. Because of the the burdensome nature of an appeal. So think about it this way, when we have a zoning hearing board, the fee, the the fee just to file that appeal might be fifteen hundred dollars, right? Because you gotta have a s- a stenographer there, you have an attorney to to run the hearing. You have to bring the people in. It's expensive. You have to publicly advertise it. It's a cumbersome. Difficult thing to do to just to have an appeals process. And to make it fair and to make it uniform. So that's why the the township, I think rightfully in this case, said, let's not create this burdensome process. Let's make sure that we build some safeguards into it. And and I do think that's what the ordinance does. But it does re- require diligence by the residents of the community. So the same thing you're doing. Tonight, if this becomes something where it's, you know, it's just running amok. That you people gotta come to talk to the board and say, we don't understand. Why you got an enforcement officer just going around taking photos of everybody's house and saying, wait, you don't like the the way your paint looks? That's not what this ordinance is for, and I don't think there's any board that's gonna set up here that would support that type of draconian behavior. This ordinance is not designed for that. This ordinance is designed to fill a gap in the township's code of ordinance. Uh, and we do already have a number of ordinances that they don't really address the issue that this one does.
All right, well, we we have it easier because our resolution committee are all volunteers. There's no cost. And, uh, the the chair of the of the committee. Writes writes down what they decide and take it to the board. We're also all volunteers, so. It takes time and as someone famously said, time is money, but in this case, not directly. Uh, the thing that that concerned me was that the mention of civil judgment. District, uh, justice and rapport just pop up. There's no reference to how they got involved or.
So it doesn't, it doesn't get there until.
Well, it it doesn't say why it gets there or how.
Notice of violation. It doesn't go anywhere until you get a notice of violation. Before you get a notice of violation, you're gonna get a warning. The intent of that whole one thirty four eleven section. Is to encourage the code enforcement officer to work with the resident to try and resolve it before it raises rises to a level. That the township has to take some. And at that point, if it does rise to that level, that is the property owner's opportunity to make their argument as before.
Well, my comment would. About working with the gentleman in the green shirt, it's fine to be wrecked.
Our resolution committee says that the manager, because as the homeowner, they got the violation, goes to the manager who sent it. And says, I don't agree with this. And the manager is supposed to try and work with the homeowner the same way you're talking about enforcement officer. To try and solve it without it going. But if it it can't be resolved at that point, then it goes next step. At that end, the last time we revised its finals.
The the last thing I would add to this, uh, comment is that the civil complaint is actually. Or from the township's perspective, a better direction to go than a summary offense. Because we could, and most of these not, uh, these types of ordinances. Uh, it it is considered a summary offense to violate a health, safety, welfare provision. Um, what we have found is that the civil complaint actually also creates an additional. Uh, ability to make the property owner understand what's happening. It's a process that takes it into district court in a manner that's, I think, more reasonable. It's an easier form of communication than if you getting a ticket, basically a non-graphic citation. It's only gonna reference us a quick section, right? And and we would have to file a new ticket. Again, we're looking at the burden on the township every day to be able to get that, those fines to go where they need to go to get action from a. A possible property owner who doesn't care. And that's our main concern, our absentee property owners. Property owners that have a bunch of tenants and they're not taking care of the property. We're getting complaints from the tenants. We've had to go in and get a court order to go into the building. I mean, I I've covered fourteen municipalities. And I can tell you, it's a tough, it's a really tough position to be in when you can't get into a building, right? And this is the kind of ordinance that gives us that ability to deal with some of these.
Sometimes we don't know that the building is is being rented. Until the tenant comes into the office and says, I have a problem. They say, oh, you, where do you live? Oh, no, I I live there. I'm renting. Oh, really? Because the the landlord is supposed to pay an annual fee to have renters and sometimes they forget to do that.
Okay, so, um, this is a public hearing.
It's not a public hearing.
I'm sorry, it's a public meeting, but the intent is to hear from the public and we wanna make sure everybody has it as a chance, has at least one bite. Of the apple. So we we would like to hear from you and answer questions whenever we can, but, um, is there? John, do you mind if I move?
Oh, no, go ahead. Every time, uh, my understanding is official public comment periods may allow. That they're being more flexible about answering questions, so I think that's nice.
Thank you. So I saw your hand next, uh, are there other folks that would like to make public, uh, comments also? Okay, so let this gentleman.
I also would like to make a final comment.
Uh, is that? Is that Mr. Antonucci?
Yeah. Yes, it is.
Okay, great. Can you let these folks have a bite of the apple first before you?
Of course, yes.
Thank you very much for your patience.
Yes, okay. Hi, I'm Jim Huriocy, uh, moderate. Vice President, Secretary for Attorney, Chair. Okay, no more times with that. I appreciate the discussion we've had about the nuances. About different things because it is important. You don't know like. How future zoning officers are gonna be, you know, what they're gonna target, whether they'll go after, but. Right now, I don't really fear an overreaches. I feel that we have an underreaches. And the reason I say it is because the intent is not to go after. Okay, I, one of my windows has gotten my back deck. It's those abandoned buildings in my development. In a two mile radius, there's literally, I mean, I took pictures, there's ten abandoned buildings. That, I mean, I'm just gonna. Picture of. That are just sitting there. I mean, there's like by my house, I wish I might have had. I mean, there, there's just everywhere. The leaves are falling, kids can go in there, there's danger, it's gonna be. I mean, there there's just everywhere, the roofs are falling, kids keep going there, there's danger, there's going to be drugs in them. And, you know, we're expanding this, do you have the resources? You know, to tackle the big sharks, you know, the big fish? Because I understand the intent, the intent is not what I do in my private yard, my garage is a supermat, you know, things like that. You know, the intent is the, I mean, true, these are true stories, the neighbor next to me whose sewage was freezing on the road making it slippery when you drove. Or the person who's burning garbages next door, these are all real examples that I'm getting, you know. It's the intent of, you know, the people who flood out people's yards, the people who don't clean their swales and their soil goes across the street in the other person's yard. You know, it's the nuisance, you know, you're looking at the nuisance, trying to expand it, to crack down on the nuisance, but do we have the resources, I mean, if we already have all of these abandoned homes and that person operating the garage in the woods, which is bigger now than it was a few months ago, do we really have the resources to address these issues? With our department? That's my comment, and you don't have to answer that because of the public comment period.
I should just took a quick crack at that, I when I started here in two thousand fourteen as zoning code enforcement officer, I found that this board of supervisors was really focused on trying to clean up dilapidated rundown properties. So what I would recommend is in your community, if you have a list of buildings that are dangerous and unsafe, put that list together and get that over to Myra or Vicki, and we will go through, we will photograph them, and we can move forward on them even to before we adopt this ordinance, because there is already a dangerous and unsafe structures ordinance. So I don't think you're going to find a board here that's unwilling to tackle those issues, but we need to know about it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And who's the? Oh, there you are, thanks, Sean, sorry about that. Thank you, Sean.
Hi, my name is Shannon Spark, was here since two thousand nine, prior to that, as a chapter of the area my whole life. I have two issues with if a couple of the things, one of them being, I think it's one thirty four dash thirteen being minimum five hundred dollar fine, I find that it's orbiting for something, there could be pain feeling or whatever, a deal that maybe not more than a thousand dollars sounds good. Seven hundred fifty dollars, you know, it's warranted, but if I have beef in my shed and you guys come by and say that past the sermon, five hundred dollar fine, I I feel it's really absorbed in. Also, very many of these ordinances for the provisions in the ordinance here and everything like that, you guys also say that you know, there's already a means for enforcement, there is are already things that are on the books. I don't know why we need it doubled up in our laws, people are already saying, yes, we can enforce dilapidated housing, yes, we can address, you know, some of these other issues, I'm not sure why we need this, to be honest with you.
I.
And that's that's really my concern.
Yeah, no, I understand your comment, I was hoping that, you know, Sean, why don't you explain what we had and what we have now, like.
Yeah.
My dumb example is before we were able to call at a junkyard if somebody had a messy yard.
It's.
And then they would say, well, we're not a junkyard because we're not selling it, and then everything stopped.
Yeah, the the ordinances that that are in place, there's various chapters within, and remember that chapter one thirty four, which is nuisances, has some of the provisions for junk vehicles, it has, it it kind of picks some of the things that you find in this ordinance, but it does it in a very clumsy way, it makes it difficult for us as the way as code enforcement to actually deal with some what are some true nuisances, even though, so basically, as I said earlier, this kind of fills the gaps, it makes sure that we can target what the real issues are, and we can't do that under the current ordinance.
Yeah, I just don't know, that it doesn't make sense to me, Jim, I don't know, if if it's already non-enforceable, then why would you need to enforce it, I you know, I feel this country is built on a lot of great laws, and you know, I do agree with quite a bit.
You'd have to sit at my desk where we get complaints and we have to tell people, we can't do anything about that. Because and and these are legitimate concerns, and quite often, they could be tenants, right? That are living in, you know, unsafe conditions, we can't deal with it because we don't have a property name.
Oh, yeah.
And I know that I only.
Falls on the the burden, you know, if you're gonna rent from, if you're gonna rent a slum, you know, house. I feel that person that falls on them, and we're not, shouldn't make laws to keep people from doing that, yeah, I mean, if you already said, there are rules, there are laws against it. So, you know, like.
I think I think.
We already need it.
To adequately explain, this does. There are items in here, violations in here that are not directly covered under other ordinances in the books, and I think what this township has had a problem with over the force of battle, I don't know how many, is that they get complaints about certain properties that are nuisances. And the code enforcement office has tried to find existing ordinances on the books to address those nuisances and citing a square peg and putting it around wholesome files. And the question is always probably from the code enforcement office, my office, okay, let's look at your property maintenance code. Because ev- most every other township in the state of Pennsylvania has some type of a property maintenance code, whether it's if they just adopt the international property maintenance code, or if they do a standalone like this, if the board had reservations or concern about the extensiveness of the international property maintenance code. So the intent of this is to address some of those nuisance complaints, that this township has had a problem adequately addressing for the betterment of the public, public safety, welfare in the past. That I believe, I mean, I don't want to speak for the board, but my understanding is that is the true intent of adopting this ordinance, I don't want anyone to take the impression that yeah, all the items addressed in this ordinance are already covered in other ordinances, these are not, this township does not have a property maintenance ordinance on the books as of today. All the, most of the surrounding municipalities, but Middle Smithfield Township does not. And that has prevented the township to address a number of nuisances over the years in an inappropriate manner. If I'm wrong, I just wanted to clarify that, this is not addressing things that are already addressed other elsewhere in the co-ordinances. Got it, and just to address your fa- concern about the amount of fines, for us to go into court, we we have to, the fine has to be that much, because the township doesn't get to recoup that. Well, wait, 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 wait. That language, no less than five hundred, no more than a thousand, is in the second class township code, that that provision is taken right out of the code. I will tell you, the actual fine at the end of the day will be set by the district magistrate. Has have I ever been before a district magistrate that has for a violation that has instituted the maximum fine? I have not, now, I'm not a good lawyer, maybe that's why, but usually district magistrates try to, listen, if we go to a district magistrate for a hearing.
They're elected, by the way, the district magistrate, I mean, I mean.
They are the individuals that issue the fine. And to even get there, the property owner must have failed or just refused to address the violation that the township has felt rises to the level of a nuisance for a period of probably, I mean.
Probably five to six months.
Five to six months, before we even get to a district magistrate, the township has, since I've been.
It doesn't say anything about the five or six months in here, you know.
That is the intent, that is the intent of section one thirty four, there is a warning letter there. And then there needs to be a violation, and that is not, there is not a set timeframe, and my understanding is the township always tries to work with residents to resolve the issue, because at the end of the day, they just want the residents to fix the violation or address whatever the issue is, they're not looking for a fine, they just want the property owners to comply with it. End of story.
But like, once again, if you say that the district magistrate wouldn't institute a five hundred dollar fine for.
I didn't say wouldn't, I said I have never experienced it very much.
That's kind of what you alluded to, and it it's obligated to according to the way it's written, I would say that's not a five hundred dollar. I see you were fine twenty five dollars when we asked for five hundred. Oh, yeah, I mean, it it just said, not that's that, no, I mean, I feel that.
That's that's great out of the core, actually.
And I know, it's boilerplate stuff, and some of these things are, and I realize that. But I also feel that the twenty four hours is not reasonable notice to come into someone's home, especially if they work out of town, that some people don't even come to this to their house in this area, more than three times a year, you can't take one sentence without the other. And I say that because it says, again, at the end of that paragraph you're looking at, the prior range must be made with the owner. Whether it's twenty four hours, forty, I don't remember it, the owner has acknowledged it, and make that appointment with the code enforcement. It's specifically said, this specifically says twenty four hours, prior to the range, it must be made with the owner. It says upon reading of twenty four hours, for example, twenty four hours, so reasonable, I understand, first, I know that.
Would you like to comment if I may?
Right, I I I get, listen, I mean, if I may, I mean, I I think, you know, we we, a lot of people just commented, and I appreciate it. I think that the takeaway from my standpoint is that whether it be in the ordinance or appended to it, somehow there'd be definitions, somehow there'd be examples, somehow simplify it, you know. Listen, we're not going to come up with every example, I mean, you got fifty people here, you're gonna have fifty examples that are are not, no one's gonna be able to figure it out. But I think that my takeaway again is if we have a definition portion to it, whether it be in the ordinance or appended to it, so that we can explain what code enforcement. I mean, this one hasn't found out yet, the opportunity to amend it. And that, of course, is what I'm telling you, because this will come up in two weeks, but within those two weeks, that that's my takeaway. Okay, code enforcement officer is not a state cop, it's not, you know, it's all sorts of things, so again, we can define this better for people, you know, and I think John may have said that in a lot of respects, this was written because we sort of understand, you know, the intent. But if someone's standing on that side of the podium reading it, maybe it's not as clear. But I will say, and and I wholeheartedly believe this, that there are safeguards in here that you're not going to have some crazy road board that's going to go after you for a chipmunk in the wood pot. Okay, there are safeguards in here, and that's why it says you have to go to the district court. Okay, there's a layer upon layer, it don't just stop there, you know, the district court says this, and you don't agree, then you go to the next guy, you go, who the hell knows how far you go on, but there are safeguards in here, so, you know.
Would you like to comment?
Sorry?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Keep talking.
Okay, yes, Mr. Antonucci, what is your comment? If you.
Are you talking to me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I agree with the gentleman, the unintended consequences of pretty much anything nobody ever appreciates.
Okay, is there anyone else that has a comment, are we finished, Mr. Antonucci?
Awesome.
Oh, I think you lost it.
Your own good time.
Okay, well, in the meantime, is there anyone else that has any public comment, yeah, well, now, wait a minute.
I'm going the second time.
Before we go to the second one, the apple, is there anybody who wants a first bite of the apple, anybody? Anybody, anybody in Zoom land? No, okay, so I saw it, Charles, Charles, Mr. Wait a minute, Maroney, yes, Mr. Maroney first and Mr. Pabon second.
Yeah, I I'd just like to say that there's a significant difference between the the demography of Monroe Lake and Lake of Hines, sir, is that where you're from? The it's a significant difference on, you know, the type of of homeowners associations and the amount of people that are volunteering, I've been a volunteer myself for twelve years in New Zealand, and it it depends on that community, and my community is definitely needed, the township to assist my community. We barely have, I think they have three members there, no one volunteers anymore, and the younger people have to go to work. The old older people are kind of, you know, they just don't want to deal with other people that have problems. So unless you're in a community like this gentleman has, generally, it's it's more manageable not to get the township involved all the time, someone like Monroe Lake, New Zealand, I'm sure there's a half dozen others, we have significant difficulties there with people, people that's been moving in, especially to the smaller home. Okay, and I have some experience with the magistrate, we would go by by test magistrate, it would take two years to get something done, goes up your alley. So the magistrate is a problem for this township when you go to them. So that's just my, the benefit of my experience, we would just go to the next court, couldn't get anything done. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Pabon, I believe you were next.
Okay. I like that explanation you gave before, you were step by step with a process from one of them. I wish there was more in that process for each one of them. And I know that's going to be the, the other thing is that you're not considering the association at all. You're bypassing the associations completely. And nobody has talked about home insurance, which takes care of a lot of things that pad that they didn't know in your properties. You know, I mean, and it's true for all, you know, are you going to take some of these things into consideration and try to come up with a more sensible bill? That's it.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else, we want to make sure everybody had an opportunity to be heard. All right, okay, so you know we're going to meet there again, two weeks from now, May eleventh, that'll have a public hearing for this, in the meantime, if you have any questions, you can always call the township office, and we'll be happy to answer any questions or give any more examples. Several folks have talked about ordering, we're happy to, you know, Stephen Billups is willing to take a crack, if anybody else would like to send something in, we'll be happy for it. Are you raising your hand, is right, oh, one, one vote.
Now on the eleventh, I think that's three weeks.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, you're right, it's three, it's it is May eleventh, I just can't, it's happened over. It'll be at seven.
Two weeks from now, May eleventh, I just wanted to clarify.
It's it's May eleventh is our next, so this month, normally our board of supervisor meetings are the second and fourth Thursday of the month, this month it was the first and third, so May eleventh is our next meeting, it's at seven PM, and that's when the public hearing is, so.
And just to be clear, it is the current ordinance is drafted, we want them to advertise for that here.
All right, so going once, any further comments?
Well, you're, so just to be clear, is the current ordinance that the draft ordinance that has already been drafted, that's been advertised. Correct, that is what has been happening.
It's been amended towards whatever.
If there.
If if we amend it, we have to go through this one first, and then if the board decides to amend it, that would be a whole new series of public hearings. That makes sense?
This is totally, I realize.
Look.
I think the general perception is that, you know, we not agreeing with this, so that's why we should show up on May eleventh to.
We can have more public.
Say the same thing again, or?
If that will open the public hearing again to hear from the public, the board can. The board can vote to table it like we did the first time. We can vote to pass it or we can vote to not pass it after the public hearing. Yes, or after the public hearing.
That, that it's the goal of the public hearing. Who thinks that there should be some language changes? To convince at least two board members to reject it as written and go back to the drawing.
At, right, and write.
That's why we'd come May eleventh and say.
Yeah.
Okay. And if we had written something that we thought would work instead and run it. Maybe that would be more persuasive to the board members.
Or in the meantime, too.
So be careful, be careful because every one of these, I looked at and said, is it really necessary? And then it became like the broken window. It's not the crack.
Well, that's, I was looking at energy about you need to paint. Well, you have tents that are eating the paint off the wall. Yes, you do. You know, it's not a matter of, you know, every, every single one of these, you can say, no, it doesn't need to be there, but then what if? What if we're going, what if we have to do this?
Yes, Mr. Pabon.
Two things, uh, being hearing aired. I would sit up there in the front row so I could hear who's speaking on the podium. But I like to sit in the back so I can see everybody. I don't have to turn around all evening. So I'd really like a microphone by the podium. So that you, those of us who are in the back. Can hear what's being, all, everything that's being said. So that, that's just one point of interest. My other point is, if you give me an example, example, I guess from the zoning officer. Uh, of a situation without specifically giving details that would identify the property. But the problem that your current ordinance can't address, that your hands are tied. That's why you have to go with this ordinance.
Is we have a, oh, don't try.
Can, can I give an example? Okay, so the Four Seasons Diner. Has been vacant and abandoned for a long time.
Yeah.
So our ordinance currently says. The building has to be safe and secure. So he put a chain across the, the owner put a chain across the driveway. When it looks unsightly in the front and there's grass and all of that, he mows it. But there's nothing that compels him to mow it because we don't have anything. There's nothing that compels him to take care of his landscaping because we don't have anything now. And all it means is that he has peeling pieces of metal, metal siding. That when we had high winds, I thought for sure that was gonna fly off.
Somebody was here early was concerned.
That's, that's a very valid one. I was like.
So, so this one.
Of a residential property where your hands are tied.
Well, we have examples of that, too. If you would like to.
Similar situations where gutters are falling off the building, uh, siding may have blown off, uh, you know. And, and there's no place in, in our current ordinance that allows us to do such an answer to my question. Thank you.
So would you have something, I mean.
Show it and have it. Don't drive.
Michelle, would you like to?
I think I have.
Yeah, I would, I would. I'm putting on a friend to believe that.
Yeah.
But those, those. So, and so that was an example also for you, Mr. Mr. Shannon. I think you were asking for this. This covers it. What we have now does not cover it.
I, I really don't see where uh, gutters or using siding are a public safety hazard either.
Well, it's not a safety hazard, it's a public nuisance because it degrades neighborhood property on its value. Uh, literally, I have people coming in my office saying. My real estate agent said, I'm never gonna sell your house until you do something about that or those people over there do something. And we get neighbors, like literally five or six of those residents in that community will come in. And we have to say, we have no tools in our toolbox to deal with that. But, but now we will, once we have this.
Yes.
McLean, that, that's what you just said. We live near the compost place. We can't sell our house. So that's it. It's same example that you just said. The neighbor can't sell his house because of something next to him. We can't sell our house because of the compost place. And it is a mess. It's a very.
Well, I, I, I'm not really here to address that tonight. I, nobody actually.
I heard a noise twenty. From seven o'clock to two o'clock. Every day except Sunday.
Okay.
Oh, is there?
I believe that falls within the bill. Because you were talking before about commercial properties and no commercial.
We're more than happy to address how many violations, ma'am. If you want to reach out to us and file.
I have, nothing happened.
Well, if, if nothing's happened, it may be because.
And nothing happened.
Okay, well, I will talk to the office and make sure that we follow up on your complaint to see if there's something you can do.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
We're gonna move on to.
Yeah, yeah. Is there any other comment before we move on to the last thing?
Anybody know how many HOAs we're having with the township? On your mind, it's a fun. I, I don't know. Uh, Holland used to have uh, two meetings a year with all the HOA officers that would come in and. Talk about HOA issues and problems and, and she's got other jobs now and the, the township really stopped that. Maybe COVID has something to do with it.
So what's the number?
But I recommend you get that going again. What's the number?
It's spelled out.
Fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven.
That is exactly.
Yeah. Yeah.
They all have very problem. Well, you know, some are shared and some are unique. Is there anybody from C C T here tonight?
All right. Is there any other public comment before we go to new business?
One last one. So there's, what would be a front full version? And some properties, private properties, some to worry. It would be more allowable for all the residents of the township if there was some kind of another front created. To help with uh, homeowners that sometimes, and I know a couple, now we can't like a thousand dollars from social security then one.
Well, in the meantime, if you know anyone who's struggling, in the meantime. Please have them call the office. We'll, we'll direct them to the. But in the meantime, if you know anyone who's struggling. Uh, by all means, have them call the office. We'll be able to connect them with the agencies that can help them. Okay? Thank you. Uh, anybody else have any other public comment before we move to new business? Okay, so new business. Anyone? Where we know the business, uh, I believe we have exhausted the public comment part because that's that. Um, so unless there's anything, the next thing will be a motion to adjourn.
You're there.
Um, it's a question, they were. Thank you very much for coming. I will see you all on May eleventh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think you exhausted it.